with some different kids, you know, maybe a little bit of a difference in skill level. It's still really manageable, right? You're able to help everybody in the lesson. Um, so most of my favorite memories are probably with the tiny privates that we've had this year. Um, so one of my favorite classes I've had was a three-year-old. Her name was Kirsten and within five lessons, she still never said a word to me. She was too young and she never talked, but after right around three or four days, she was able to be skiing on Jack Kendrick, which was amazing to watch her get better just every single day. So I would say go for it, right? I mean, it's something completely different. You'll never find a job like this one, you know? If you don't do it now, I promise you'll end up at a desk and you won't like it. Next year, I definitely want to come back. Right now, I'm kind of deciding on colleges and stuff, but if I could make it work where I could do online school and still work here full time, I really think that that would be awesome. Right? Going home and doing school, not my favorite part of the day, but then being able to come out here and work with kids all day and be on the snow, right? I mean, that's awesome. I wish I could do that for the rest of my life. Uh, my name is Dawn Bridges. I'm from Arvada, Colorado. I am a level one snowboard instructor and yeah. Some of my favorite lessons, well, I'll be honest, I like all lessons. Um, but I really do like first timers because I get to be the person to introduce snowboarding to them and inspire them to hopefully get them to come back and love the sport. So first timers are really cool to teach, um, but you definitely can't beat like a solid level four class that can just cruise around and, um, you know, work on carving and jumping and turning. So how do I like Winter Park? I love it here. I basically grew up riding this mountain, um, so I know it pretty well and, uh, we have a pretty good crew here. Yeah, everyone's, everyone's really friendly and, um, lineup is really fun. Yeah, I don't know. Small town vibe, which is, which is nice, even though we have a ton of terrain to ride. So that's really cool. The snow's the best here, of course. The thing I like most about being an instructor is just being able to connect with so many people on a daily basis. Like they, they come to me as strangers and they leave feeling like friends because, you know, I really, I really try to get to know them and what, you know, what's going to be meaningful to them and what's going to connect them so that I can inspire them. And I just feel like I make such good connections as a teacher. So that's my favorite part. This is really, I mean, it sounds cliche, but this is a dream come true for me. So I'm just, I'm just happy to be here, even though I know it's COVID, I still had a great time.
It's an awesome day. It's been a long time coming trying to get this road expanded and the people of Denver made it happen with their vote in 2017. So thank you. Thumbs up. Progress is being made because of your vote. Here we go. One, two, three.
When Denver voters approved nearly $1 billion in general obligation bonds in 2017, they weren't just investing in important infrastructure like this roadway, but in our economy and our community as well.
We've opened up the gates to the largest urban refuge in the country, right here in our own backyard. We've opened up a brand new open space park right here at our own backyard. We have created a gateway to the third busiest airport in the world, right in our backyard. 56th Avenue, the widening and the improvements of 56th Avenue should have been top of that list. And so this is a very important time, a very important project for us to stand here and to celebrate today. It's no small feat. It's why I wanted to be here because 19 years ago, I remember being in Washington DC saying, if you're going to open up the refuge as a public space, or at least a public attraction, you must improve 56th Avenue. And 19 years later, here we are celebrating this monumental moment.
I've been a Montbello resident for almost 30 years and it means a lot for us on the residential side of Montbello to be able to have safe passage, safe intersection crosswalks, also a multi-youth pathway that we could walk or bike here to the refuge to enjoy nature and the outdoors and get some exercise.
Our disadvantaged small business office sets goals for the utilization of minority and women-owned businesses on projects like this. We also have a team that goes out to support the small businesses that will be impacted. And thirdly, we have a workforce team. Just to give you an example of the impact that the work that they're doing is having, particularly on the Montbello community, over 400 Montbello residents have worked on some of these city construction projects in recent years and making an average wage of over $27.50 an hour.
I got to tell you how awesome it is that we can hire people in the community to take advantage and to be beneficiaries of the investments that are occurring here.
Work now and the community that they've done for me, like they helped me pay, get to front work, give me tools, give me boots. It's just been so much help. Real game changer for me.
The best is yet to come.
Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. Thank you for having us.
I'm Sam and Diego. Welcome to the Denver City Council meeting of Monday, January 30th, 2023. Uh, council members, please rise as you're able and join Councilman Flynn in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our question is, why would the United States of America and its 23rd republic for its strange, why nation, why God, individual with liberty and health as a ground?
Thank you. And council members, please join Councilman Flynn as he leads us in the Denver City Council land acknowledgement.
The Denver City Council honors and acknowledges that the land on which we reside is the traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples. We also recognize the 48 contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. We honor elders, past, present, and future, and those who have stewarded this land throughout generations. We also recognize that government, academic, and cultural institutions were founded upon and continue to enact exclusions and erasures of indigenous peoples. May this acknowledgement demonstrate a commitment to working to dismantle ongoing legacies of oppression and inequities and recognize the current and future contributions of indigenous communities in Denver.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, roll call. Cedebacka? Herndon?
Here.
Hi.
Here.
Here.
Black?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Cedebacka?
Here. Here.
Kenech?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Sandoval?
Here.
Sawyer?
Here.
Madam President?
Here.
Thirteen members present? There are 13 members present. Council has a quorum. Approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes of January 23rd? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Uh, council announcements, are there any announcements today? Councilwoman Sawyer?
Thanks, Madam President. Um, just wanted to remind everyone that Councilmember Heinz, Councilmember Herndon, myself, and Councilmember Cedebacka are hosting a series of community conversations to consider instituting the DOA Design Standard Overlay along Colfax on parcels between Sherman and Yosemite. Uh, we'll be doing our second open house tomorrow evening at Carla Madison Rec Center. Um, there'll be big maps for everyone to take a look at and give feedback and we'll have a presentation, um, as well. So 6:00 PM at Carla Madison Rec Center tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, seeing no, no one else in queue, there are no presentations, there are no communications. Uh, proclamation 23-0093 is on consent. Uh, Councilwoman Ortega, did you have any comments on this proclamation?
No, just we're going to let it move forward on consent. This is a previous city employee, so just, uh, like to recognize them for their years of service.
Okay. Uh, Madam Secretary, please read the bills for introduction.
From Finance and Governance, 23-0024, a bill for an ordinance amending the classification and pay plan for employees in the career service and for certain employees not in the career service. 23-0036, a bill for an ordinance making a supplemental appropriation in the wastewater management division, urban drainage, and flood control district tracking fund. 23-0038, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed intergovernmental agreement between the city and county of Denver and regional transportation district to offer the EcoPass program to qualified city employees. From Land use, transportation, and infrastructure, 22-1652, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed third amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city and county of Denver and urban drainage and flood control district, doing business as a mile-high flood district to continue the layer gulch reach drainage and flood control improvements in Council District Three. 23-0030, a bill for an ordinance amending the Denver zoning code, establishing the Sunnyside Conservation Overlay Zone District and the Sunnyside Conservation and Brick Overlay Zone District, and clarifying standards in the Potter Highlands Conservation Overlay Zone District and the Bungalow Conservation Overlay Zone District. And 23-0031, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for multiple properties to apply the Sunnyside over, excuse me, the Sunnyside Conservation Overlay and the Sunnyside Conservation and Brick Overlays within the Sunnyside neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, this is your last opportunity to call out an item. Councilman Flynn, will you make the motions for us tonight?
Certainly, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll do a recap. Under resolutions, no items have been called out. Under bills for introduction, no items have been called out. Under bills for final consideration, Councilwoman Black has called out Bill 15 for a vote. Under pending, no items have been called out. Uh, Madam Secretary, please put the first item on our screens. Thank you. Councilman Flynn, will you please put Bill 15 on the floor for final passage?
Yes, I move that Council Bill 23-15 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you very much. It has been moved and seconded. Are there comments by members of council? Councilwoman Black?
Thank you, Madam President. I called this out to vote no on it. I made some of these comments, um, at the last meeting. Um, it's a bill that decriminalizes jaywalking. However, jaywalking will remain illegal under state law. Um, my concerns are twofold. One, um, with an average number of jaywalking citations of 22 a year, there's absolutely no data, uh, supporting the, um, idea that the police are targeting any group for jaywalkers. Um, and recently, CDOT released, um, data that, um, in the past 10 years, there's been a 57% increase in traffic deaths and 30, 36% of those are pedestrians and bicycles. Um, the chief of the Colorado State Patrol said, "What we're seeing across Colorado are the consequences when too many drivers ignore the rules of the road and it's unacceptable." So my concern is not about whether someone, um, might get a ticket for jaywalking. My concern is about people's safety and I think the problems with this bill is that it sends a message that jaywalking is okay to do. And, um, as I said earlier, we all spend a lot of time advocating with Dottie for safe routes to schools, for crosswalks, for crossing guards, for rapid flashing beacons, for hawk signals, which are all at intersections where we want pedestrians to go and cross the street. So to send a message that if there's no car coming, you don't need to cross at the crosswalk, go in the middle of the block. I think that's a, a very dangerous message to send. It's a dangerous message to send, I think, to children. Um, I live near a school and I've advocated a lot for crosswalks and then to see kids who might run across mid-block thinking that the car is far enough away or, when I leave council on Monday nights, I drive south on Broadway usually in the dark and almost every Monday night, someone is running across Broadway wearing dark clothing. It's very hard to see. So I think while this may have certain intentions, I think the ultimate, um, message it's sending is that it's okay to jaywalk and I think that's putting pedestrians, um, in harms way. So that's why I am not voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in queue, Madam Secretary, roll call on Bill 23-15. Cedebacka?
Aye.
Herndon?
No.
Heinz?
Aye.
Black?
Nay.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Cashman?
Nay.
Kenech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Three days, 10 ayes? 10 ayes. Council Bill 23-15 has passed. That concludes the items to be called out. Um, all bills for introduction are ordered published. Council members, remember this as a consent or block vote and you'll need to vote aye. Otherwise, this is your last chance to call out an item for a separate vote. Councilman Flynn, will you please put the proclamations and resolutions for adoption and the bills on final consideration for final passage on the floor?
Uh, yes, I will, Madam President. Thank you. I move that the proclamations and resolutions be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed upon final consideration and do pass in a block for the following items. 20, uh, 23-93, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 27, 37, 28, 51, 1682, 39, 40, 41, 42, 1, and that's it.
Good job. Uh, thank you so much. And that has been moved. I need a second. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, roll call. Cedebacka?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kenech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. 13 ayes? 13 ayes. The proclamations and resolutions have been adopted and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. Tonight, there'll be a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-1602, changing the zoning classification for 3065 South Ogden Street in Washington Park West, and a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-1603, change in the zoning classification for 1772 and 1788 South Akoma Street in Overland. Anyone wishing to speak on these matters must go online to sign up during the recess of council. If there are no objections from members of council, we will recess until 5:30.
"Walking Bird," an emotionally shattering landmark production of an American classic. Don't miss the broadcast adaptation of the classic novel. Discover the spectacular event at the Colorado Convention Center where you can find inspiration from the latest ideas and trends in landscaping, gardening, and home improvement. Memory Mirror is an immersive installation that invites visitors to explore their relationship with memory through animation, dioramas, and interactive storytelling. As part of the installation, you are invited to contribute images or an audio recording that represents a personal memory. Stylish and vibrant, this world premiere play offers a lighthearted look at the struggles many Latinas go through to gain entry into cultural and artistic spaces that have historically excluded them. It examines Latinx representation in the media, the fears and uncertainties of adulthood, art as an industry, love and family. On the first Friday of every month, many Rhino locations open their doors with events ranging from art openings to live music. Standard hours are 6:00 to 9:00 PM, but many locations are open during the day and later into the night. And that's a quick look at what's happening in Denver this week. The history of Dillon Reservoir and Dam is one of geology and geography, resilience, and of course, resources. The beginning of the 20th century was marked by drought and increasing concerns over meeting the future water needs of the booming Front Range population. Denver...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Will the joint committee composed of Senators Buckner and Kirkmire and Representatives Tatum, Dixon, and Lynch escort the governor into the House chamber?
Denver was the queen of the Rockies, dwarfing everything else around it for years and years and years. Everything's got to have a spine or a backbone or a heart or a soul. And Colfax, because it ran like a spike right through the heart of town and energized it all the way through, is the heart of Denver, it's the heart of Colorado. In fact, in the early years, I really think Broadway and Colfax were probably the heart of the Rocky Mountain West. A 26-mile linear passageway, Colfax Avenue is the longest commercial thoroughfare in America, traversing the Denver metropolitan landscape from the farmland of Aurora to the foothills in Golden. As both neighborhood Main Street and transcontinental highway, Colfax is the one avenue that best reflects the people and events that shaped the Centennial State. The story of the West unfolds on Colfax Avenue. Amid the ebb and flow of cultures and commerce, an urban identity emerged. Here, along the banks of this concrete river, the link between history and destiny can be discovered. Denver is a city of 4,000 people with 10 or 12 streets, two hotels, a bank, a theater, half a dozen chapels, 50 gambling houses, and 100 grog shops. As you wander about these hot and dirty streets, you seem to be walking in a city of demons. William Hepworth... William Hepworth Dixon, 1867.
You've got an awful lot of these rambunctious, randy youth out here, twenty-year-olds that don't get along at home, and the parents say, "Good, go as far as the way as you want." That's the population. Statistically, it's young and it's male, twenty males for each female.
The Colorado Territorial Legislature merged the towns of Denver City, Araria, and Highlands in 1859 to create the city of Denver. By the mid-1860s, the street at the southern edge of town was called Colfax Avenue, in honor of the Speaker of the U.S. House of Representatives, Skyler Colfax. In 1865, the year of Colorado's first campaign for statehood, Congressman Colfax came to Denver to visit his sister. It was hoped that the Speaker's name gracing a prominent Denver street would win votes for Colorado and Washington, a goal that took eleven more years to achieve. Skyler Colfax went on to become Vice President under Ulysses S. Grant, later to be vilified for receiving railroad stock in exchange for government subsidies.
He sort of retires in disgrace as Vice President in 1872, but he's never convicted of anything. And given the morals of the day, he wasn't any less ethical than the bulk of his contemporaries. And plus, he was smiling, Skyler Colfax, a friendly, jovial guy.
Skyler Colfax died in obscurity at a railroad station in Minneapolis.[693.44][693.44](music) Henry Cordes Brown arrived in Denver in 1861 on his way to the California goldfields. A carpenter by trade, he was adventuresome, industrious, and at forty, a failure. The journey across the plains had exhausted Brown's wife. She announced that he could go on to California if he wished, but she would stay. Denver became their new home. In 1864, Brown homesteaded 160 acres of land on a prairie hill overlooking the fledgling town of Denver, with spectacular views of the mountains. To promote his addition, Brown donated ten acres of land to the Territorial Legislature in 1868 for the construction of a Capitol Building. But uncertainty surrounding both statehood and the location of the capital city delayed construction on the edge of the area Brown was already promoting as Capitol Hill. The street plat for the new addition broke from the diagonal pattern that paralleled Cherry Creek and established a straight compass axis to provide the best view for each lot. By 1880, magnificent mansions dotted the hillside. Cattle barons, silver kings, and others built elegant homes in what was becoming Denver's most elite area, and the main street was Colfax Avenue. In 1886, when construction of the Capitol Building finally began, Colfax was dusty, dirt-packed, filled with ruts, and a long ribbon of mud when it rained. Nevertheless, it was a street where the prominent paraded their wealth and a path the servants walked to work in the homes of the gentry.
With the exception of the steam railways, no institution has done so much for Denver as the street railway system. It has enabled men of moderate means to acquire homes in pleasant places away from the business center, instead of being housed tier upon tier in congested localities. Jerome Smiley.[815.75][815.75](music)
By 1883, the horsecar system included over fifteen miles of track, including a Colfax line from downtown Denver to Capitol Hill. The horsecars were too expensive for most people, but by the end of the '80s, the electric trolley made public transportation more accessible, and the exodus to the suburbs began. Bordering Colfax to the east, Park Hill and Montclair were promoted by developers as idyllic residential neighborhoods, where children could be raised far from the contaminating influence of downtown city streets, where their delicate moral fibers would be tarnished by evil associations. With many of Denver's original neighborhoods in decline, the call of the suburbs resounded. Donald Fletcher arrived in Denver in 1879. By 1883, he was an established real estate agent specializing in land development on Capitol Hill. Fletcher was handsome, well-dressed, civic-minded, and by the mid-1880s, wealthy. In 1888, he was elected President of the Denver Chamber of Commerce, and two years later, anticipating the expansion of the city eastward, he became President of the Colfax Electric Railway. Fletcher purchased four square miles of land on the eastern countryside, planted a six-block area for homesites, and named the new town after himself. Wooden sidewalks were built along East Colfax for commercial development. Homes were erected, and the town's population quickly rose to 200. The streetcar line arrived in 1893. Fletcher was booming like the rest of Colorado, and the future was bright as silver. The first subdivision west of Sheridan Boulevard was formed by William Austin Hamilton Loveland with his wife and his business partner on July 1, 1889. The Lovelands built their home at Colfax and Harland Street. The arid, grassy subdivision was named for their optimistic vision of its future, Lakewood. Loveland had already built railroads to the mountains when he laid track in 1890 for his Denver Lakewood and Golden Line along 13th Avenue. Trains began running the next year. The Rocky Mountain News described the new railroad as "a humble affair, with fifteen miles of track and eight stations." In 1893, a stroke of President Grover Cleveland's pen punctured Colorado's silver lining. Across the state, thriving mountain communities became ghost towns. The financial panic in the wake of the silver crash swept over Denver like a rising tide. Mercantile establishments closed, banks collapsed, and industries tumbled. The blow was so staggering that many predicted the city would never recover. Donald Fletcher left Colorado, abandoning his opulent Capitol Hill mansion and leaving residents in his namesake town with bond payments for non-existing water. Irate settlers eventually renamed the town to promote a more positive image, the goddess of the dawn, Aurora. Prosperous real estate developer Henry Brown spent his declining years fighting off creditors trying to foreclose on his Brown Palace Hotel. William Loveland died in 1894 in his Lakewood home. Two funeral trains, one from Golden and another from Denver, met near the Loveland home, bringing the area's most prominent citizens to pay their last respects. The pioneer era was over, and the civic leaders gathered at the West Colfax farmhouse were faced with the daunting task of rebuilding their communities.[1040.83][1040.83](music) In December 1902, John Sebastian Flower, a well-respected real estate man at the peak of his career, raised a storm of protest over his plans to erect a commercial building in the middle of exclusively residential Capitol Hill. The opposition was led by millionaire Lawrence Phipps, a Capitol Hill homeowner. Phipps charged that Flower's property would be "an eyesore to the neighborhood and would establish a precedent from which it could never recover." Flower's response was prophetic.
Colfax Avenue has passed the residential period and will soon undergo the same change that has taken place on Fifth Avenue in New York, where shops, stores, and clubs have largely replaced residences.
The West Vernon Hotel opened early in 1907, an elegant New Orleans-style building, and even Lawrence Phipps was impressed with the design of the structure and the quality of its tenants, the Capitol Hill Drugstore, Samuel Westbrook's Bakery, and the William Speth Floral Company. At the same time that John Flower was changing the face of Colfax on Capitol Hill, a national progressive movement inspired his friend Robert Spear to change the face of Denver. In 1904, when Spear was elected mayor, Denver streetscapes were dominated by eighty-foot telephone poles draped with separate wires for each telephone. Outhouses, dirt streets, and planked sidewalks littered the landscape. The "queen city of the plains," as one visitor observed, "was more plain than queenly." Mayor Spear envisioned a new Denver, a city of grace and charm, reflecting the art and grandeur of European cities.
The City Beautiful Movement was, as much as anything, a health and safety movement because cities were very overcrowded, very polluted. So it was a movement to provide more open space for residents and to provide more places where there would be healthy, fresh air.
Mayor Spear transformed garbage-infested Cherry Creek into a walled waterway bordered by a landscaped boulevard. He commissioned monuments, fountains, and decorative streetlights. And for the heart of the city, on Colfax Avenue, Spear envisioned an expansive, park-like The Spear legacy left shaded streets and burdened parkways that forever transformed a high plains desert town to a city beautiful. When the Laramie-Colfax rail and road viaduct opened in 1917, it became the longest concrete span of its kind in the world, and Brooklyn, the riverside neighborhood in the shadow of the viaduct, housed 300 residents in its nine-by-two-block enclave. From the Platte River to Sheridan Boulevard, West Colfax was home to a close-knit community of Eastern European Jews, many of whom came to Denver in hopes of finding relief from the great epidemic of the time. At the turn of the century, tuberculosis was the leading cause of illness and mortality in America, and the recommended treatment included maximum exposure to a dry and sunny climate. The immigration to Colorado was enormous. Jewish consumptives from the eastern U.S., Europe, and Russia were the largest ethnic migration to Denver following the establishment of two Jewish sanatoriums, both located on Colfax. National Jewish Hospital opened in 1899 on the corner of Colfax and Colorado Boulevard. And to the west, near the Lakewood subdivision, the Jewish Consumptives Relief Society opened in 1904. The JCRS housed patients in wooden tent cottages, which allowed them maximum exposure to the benefits of Colorado's climate.
The patients are expected to sleep out there, whether it's eighty degrees or ten below zero. And actually, the tent treatment did work in a way. People did not die of tuberculosis. Of pneumonia, yes, but not of tuberculosis.[1310.71][1310.71](music)
In the summer of 1917, casualties of the Great War in Europe began returning home with respiratory ailments caused by tuberculosis and chemical warfare. The need for health care once again changed the Colfax landscape. On the far east side, the bucolic Guthiel Nursery acreage was purchased by Denver and Aurora businesses and leased to the U.S. War Department to establish a military recuperation camp. After the war, business leaders persuaded the Army to make the camp permanent. In 1920, Fitzsimmons Army Hospital was named in honor of Lieutenant William T. Fitzsimmons, the first American doctor to die in World War I. To support the workers and families of the infirm, the area around Colfax and Peoria quickly developed into a commercial center. One of Fitzsimmons' first patients, Colonel Arthur Hart, built thirteen cottages near the hospital, which he rented to servicemen's families. His Dutch mill on Colfax became a symbol of help and hospitality. The political climate that gripped America after World War I brought the progressive movement to an abrupt halt, ushering in an age of distrust and hate. M wartime inflation between 1914 and 1920 more than doubled the price of food. Fuel and electricity went up 66 percent. But despite the inflation, the Denver tramway company moved to reduce wages. On August 1, 1920, tramway employees voted to strike. The tramway company responded by hiring John Blackjack Jerome, a professional union buster, who brought in armed strikebreakers to cross the picket line. The strikers rioted, laying siege to the tramway building and overturning four streetcars on Colfax near the Immaculate Conception Cathedral. The violence resulted in six deaths and 52 injuries before martial law and federal troops brought in uneasy peace. Three months after the strike, union workers voted almost unanimously to return to their jobs. They were rehired without seniority and at less than they were making before the strike. On March 26, 1929, Mayor Ben Stapleton broke ground for the crowning glory of the civic center. The Denver City and County Building was under construction the following October, when the stock market crashed. Within three years, one of every four Coloradans was out of work.[1477.03][1477.03](music) The New Deal of the 1930s brought relief during the Great Depression throughout America. On Colfax, the WPA widened and paved large sections of the street. By the end of the decade, Colfax Avenue's designation as U.S. Route 40, America's first transcontinental highway, completed its transformation from local Main Street to metropolitan gateway. The freedom of the open road lured increasing numbers of tourists, and Colfax Avenue welcomed them with open arms. The American people were captivated by the automobile, and the windshield became a lens through which they viewed their country. A new roadside architecture emerged, designed to attract attention in the rapidly changing windshield movie. But World War II put the brakes on the runaway car culture, as gasoline was rationed and the national speed limit dropped to 35 miles per hour. By the 1930s, Colfax Avenue was Main Street to a growing number of communities. Just west of the Platte River were Jewish neighborhoods. Although most families were of humble means, their culture and community spirit inspire memories of a golden age, where every mother was a mother to all, and the world could be set right with a soda from Lou Tobin's fountain. On the east side of the Platte, the neighborhood that evolved from the original gold-diggings town of Araria was home to a closely knit Hispanic community centered around St. Cagito's Church. This was the place where people gathered and made friends, where they watched their children grow up and marry, where new babies were baptized, and in the end, where they said their final farewells. Further east, in Aurora, neighborhoods were defined by the presence of the U.S. military, with Fitzsimmons Hospital and Lowry Field flanking the city on both sides. In 1941, when the new hospital building at Fitzsimmons was completed, it became the largest structure in Colorado. On farmland west of the city, the Denver Ordnance Plant was developed to supply artillery shells and other ammunition to the War Department. West Colfax motels filled to their limits, as the plant quickly grew to 20,000 employees, and workers shared rooms, sleeping in shifts coinciding with their jobs. After the war, government jobs expanded, and the federal payroll in Denver was second only to Washington, D.C. Prosperity returned, and Colfax Avenue once again played host to tourists and locals alike, with a colorful concentration of food, lodging, and entertainment. The escape of the silver screen saw America through two world wars and the Great Depression, and no building better reflected the magic of the movies than Colfax Avenue's most spectacular theater. The Aladdin was built in the image of the Taj Mahal. When the Jazz Singer opened in 1927, the theater was the third in the nation to show a talkie. On the western edge of Denver, Eddie Bone's Pig and Whistle offered travelers the ultimate oasis, complete with restaurant and bar, motel, cabin, swimming pool, service station, and gift shop. In the bar, Eddie Bone himself held court, entertaining patrons with stories about his life in boxing and his famous friends whose pictures filled the walls. A little further west was the court of another local icon. In 1948, when Sammy Tool opened Taylor's Restaurant on Colfax near Wazworth Boulevard, it was so far on the outskirts of Denver that he decided to book entertainment to attract and hold customers. For 28 years, Taylor's Supper Club captivated patrons throughout the metro area as the future city of Lakewood grew around it. The final way stationed before the mountains was Lane's Tavern, known for the cheapest draft beer in town and for its Benny Burgers, named after owner Benny Dalcourt. Among Aurora's liquid landmarks, the Zanzibar Lounge was authentic country, reflecting the rural ambiance that still defined Aurora's Main Street. But by the 1960s, traffic patterns and societal values took a turn away from Main Street in Aurora and across America. The demise of the trolley, limited parking, and expanding suburban development shifted the commercial center from Colfax Avenue to Havana Street. Aurora was transforming from bedroom suburb to thriving city, but not on Colfax. On Capitol Hill, diversity defined the neighborhood, with low-cost rentals alongside mansions and elite apartments. The 1950s brought the beatniks, and Jack Kerouac wrote his classic novel On the Road while living a few doors north of Colfax on Lafayette Street. By the early '60s, a bohemian culture was well-established on central Colfax. The Satire Lounge became part of a growing live music scene, hosting talented newcomers like the Smothers Brothers, Judy Collins, and Bob Dylan.
Colfax is already something of a transitional area-- Colfax is already something of a transitional area. Capitol Hill is a tolerant, open place that accepts different lifestyles, people, and so the hippies, the changing social mores, sort of all add up to a different kind of Colfax experience.
In 1964, the Williams-Speth Floral Company, a tenant for 57 years, finally left the West Vernon Hotel. The building once again led a changing neighborhood when the first sex-related business on East Colfax opened in the West Vernon. Sid King's Crazy Horse Bar became the best-known strip club on a stretch that was notorious for prostitutes, drug dealers, and sleazy bars. The area became increasingly dangerous, especially for women, and almost no one strolled Colfax's Capitol Hill promenades with legitimate purpose in mind. With the opening of Interstate 70 in 1964, Colfax Avenue seeded its 100-year-old reign as gateway to the Rockies.
Now, the bulk of the tourist traffic is moved away from there, and the old-fashioned motels become slightly rundown motels, the rent-by-the-week motels. And especially by the 1970s, as a lot of the old, low-cost housing in other parts of the city is being destroyed, Colfax increasingly is becoming rundown, with people more pushed out from elsewhere than being pulled in by any magic of Colfax.
The decade of the 1970s brought dramatic and sometimes devastating changes to many Colfax neighborhoods. The construction of the Federal Boulevard Cloverleaf and McNichols Sports Arena completed the progressive demolition of the original Riverside neighborhood of Brooklyn, while a generation of young Jewish people left their West Colfax community to pursue their dreams elsewhere. An influx of Hispanic families brought a new culture to the west side, fueled in part by the demise of Arraria. Home to hundreds of families, the neighborhood was slated for demolition to make room for an inner-city college campus. St. Cagito's Church and a single block of houses are among the few remaining symbols
You can almost see it flow. You can almost see the shimmering and all the vitality, and there is no street like it, not around here, not anywhere.
All along this street of dreams, symbols of Colfax Avenue's former glory sustain its legacy. The Cottonwood Hotel, which housed the first trolley workers, still stands at the entrance to original Aurora, an area that reflects its country roots and Main Street ambiance. The Fitzsimmons Complex, given back to Aurora when the Army closed the hospital in 1993, is ushering in another health care boom on East Colfax. University of Colorado Hospital and Health Sciences Center anchored the development of a premier biomedical campus. The West Vernon Hotel remains the herald of central Colfax. In 1983, Sid King's Crazy Horse Bar was evicted to make room for the shops and offices of Bourbon Square. While the remodeling dust settled in the West Vernon, Capitol Hill began its transformation to a vibrant and diverse urban neighborhood. The city of Lakewood remains proud of its Colfax heritage. Motels and car dealers refused to let the passage of time affect their stake in the street. From JCRS to Denver West, a proliferation of retail chains and malls helped fuel a West Colfax economic engine that provides 30% of the city's sales tax base. The dilapidated Loveland House sits sadly unnoticed at the corner of the original subdivision near the old railroad right-of-way. Transportation still dictates development, and the possible introduction of rapid transit along this corridor renews the promise of William Loveland's original vision. From the dusty eastern plains to the portal of the Rocky Mountains, the 26-mile Colfax corridor still defines the Western ethos, the enduring drive to follow dreams and seek fortunes. More than a mere passageway, Colfax Avenue is a symbol of continuity and connection in a fragmented metropolis. The rhythm and diversity of life along its path provide a timeless window to the soul of Colorado.
I think Colfax is, today, what it always was then, which is a place to survive, get ahead if you can. The generations have come and gone for a long way, and the street is still there, and people are still making it on the street, really better than they have in years, I think. So if a street is reflective of people, the unsinkability of Colfax is a testimony to the unsinkability of the people who've come out here. The buildings have changed, the faces have changed, but I still see it as the heart of
Hey, everyone. We are coming to you live with our zookeeper, Amanda. Amanda, say hi to everyone.
Hey, everybody. So welcome back to Denver Zoo. We just want to thank you guys for staying with us, although we're closed. Capelle here and the other 3,000 animals we have here, sorry, here we have at Denver Zoo, want to thank you for your donations so far. We are a non-profit, so while we're closed, your guys' donations definitely do help us here. We do have our members that we want to thank also, as they... Let me give Heshi some here. They are also helping us out by getting those memberships, so those are also always available if you guys want to go ahead and get those, so that as soon as we do open again, you guys can come whenever you want.
And just to jump in, your memberships will be effective through when we reopen. So even if you donate now and we reopen in April, your memberships will be effective, open through the next year. So we appreciate your donations, we appreciate your memberships, and we completely understand. So thank you so much for all your help, everyone.
For everyone who has heard of our herd before, met them, just going to run through them real quick. This is Capelle. She's our 26-year-old giraffe, our oldest in the herd. Behind me over here is Heshi. Her long name is Heshimu, we just call her Heshi for short. She is 17 years old, and then little Dobby just walked away. He'll probably come back over, but you know, him is our three-year-old. And Capelle is Dobby's mom. We had a few questions earlier this morning, and one of them, I remember, was if giraffes make any noise, and that's a really good question, we actually get that question a lot. A lot of times, they don't make noises that we can hear. Sometimes they do, sometimes it's a chuffing noise, which always can kind of change behaviors. Sometimes it's a nice thing, sometimes it's a not-so-nice thing, sometimes it's a get-out-of-my-way. If a baby is in distress, sometimes you'll hear a moo, but here at Denver Zoo, we actually haven't had that problem. Even when Dobby was having all of his medical treatments, we never heard him moo. He was actually pretty happy hanging out with us and with mom. Sometimes they do it just because they start messing around, but for the most part, we can't hear them vocalizing at all. It's too different of a frequency for our ears to be able to pick up.
Sidney wants to know if they ever get timeouts.
They ever get timeouts? Usually not. So here at Denver Zoo, we base all of our training and our relationship building on positive reinforcement, which means we ask them to do something, we use our bridge, which tells them, hey, you did a good job, and we're going to go ahead and give you some treats for it. If they ever say, hmm, no, I don't want to do that today, that's all right, we'll ask them to do something else. Sometimes we have little thieves over here, too. If ever there's any aggression, sometimes we might walk away because we don't want to get hit by that, or we might redirect it and say, we didn't really like you doing that, can you maybe put your nose on a target instead of doing that? But they don't really get timeouts. Sometimes Miss Capelle here likes to be by herself, but that is 100% up to her, and she will actually kind of ask us in her own way to be by herself, but it's not a timeout like a kid would get.
Gracie, eight years old, from Grand Junction, wants to know how tall the average giraffe is.
Oh, that's a good question. So here at Denver Zoo, our giraffes are kind of short. That seems silly because they're so tall right now. Heshi here is about 15 and 1/2 feet tall, so we're up on our upper deck of our platform right now, so you can see that she's quite a bit taller than that. Capelle over here is about 14 and 1/2 feet tall. Giraffes can get up to 19 feet tall, but that would be a male. Dobby's dad was only 16 and 1/2 feet tall, so he may or may not get to be that tall. Now, our friends down south at Cheyenne Mountain Zoo, one of their taller giraffes is over 18 and 1/2 feet tall. I cannot remember his exact height, but he's pretty tall. So tallest would be around 19 feet, but average for girls can be anywhere from 15 to 16 feet.
When will Dobby reach full height?
Closer to five years old. So he's only about 12, or sorry, yeah, 12 feet tall right now, but he's getting up there.
Why do they have spots?
For camouflage, and they also help them thermal regulate. So it's pretty cool that if you use a thermal imaging camera on a giraffe, like what the firefighters use to check hotspots in fires, you would actually notice that their spots are a different color than the rest of their body. So one of the theories is it actually helps absorb some of that heat and reflect some of it at the same time. The crazy part is, is babies under the age of one do not have those spots in thermal imaging, and that's why they don't regulate nearly as well.
How long are their tongues?
Oh, let's see if Heshi will show you guys. So they're about 18 inches long, so that's from the point of her nose all the way out. Dobby's is still a little bit shorter, and you can see that they're purple because of the sunburn that they would get while they're eating all those leaves and stretching their tongue out, so it's an extra sun-protected. So if you also shaved all this beautiful hair off that they have, their skin underneath is also black for that same reason, so that they get extra protection from the sun.
How do you tell them apart?
That's a fun question. So Heshi and Capelle, I'm going to try to get them side by side here, are really good ones to look at. So Capelle has a lot of dark up here, where Heshi's kind of our blonde female. Dobby's still smaller, so he's easy to see. We also have fun marks on them that we can identify. If you actually go to the Facebook app, we have identifying pictures on them, where Capelle, about halfway down her neck, has a spot that kind of looks like a lobster, where Heshi, you might be able to see it, on the side over here has the bat signal, almost the perfect bat signal, so if we were calling for Batman, you could just find Heshi. Dobby, when he does get bigger, he actually has some spots inside of his spots, so that is one of our IDing factors also, but again, he's a lot smaller still.
How much do they eat in one day?
We feed out about a bale and a half, which our bales weigh anywhere from 45 to 50 pounds a day. They each get about 10 pounds of grain, and they each get 10 pounds of browse, so they do eat quite a bit. So you won't be able to house them at your house very much because they're expensive to feed.
Why are their necks so long?
They like to eat the tops of the trees. So we've got our smaller antelope that like to eat the lower parts of the trees. We've got some other antelope, like the gernuk, that can stand up on their tops of their legs to reach the next step, and these guys reach the top. So just like your trees at home, it's really good to prune them and have them trimmed and stuff like that. These guys are natural arborists and trim those trees in Africa, for them.
Karen, we're going to rotate since the giraffes have walked away from us. Allison wants to know if giraffes are aggressive.
Ooh, they're not really aggressive. They will be if they feel threatened, with us typically not. So you might have seen Heshi give me a little bit of a kiss earlier. That is a very sweet thing she does. She doesn't do that with everybody, but we also have to watch her because that could be a precursor for aggression. So she was getting a little pushy with me because I wasn't giving her the romaine, but I was also trying to keep her a little distracted. You guys might not have noticed that, but we try to keep our boundaries with them so that we don't ever have to put them in a position to be aggressive. They don't usually get aggressive with each other. Again, they do vocalize to each other without us hearing it. You'll see a lot of their actual behaviors telling them that something's scary, you need to come over here, or you need to get away from me, I'm not happy with you, before they actually kick or anything like that. We keep our distance from them, so only if we have an emergency or something going on will we go into the enclosure with them. All of our training, again, is protected contact, so there is always something between us and the giraffe, even if it's just a little fire hose, to protect them from coming into our space. They could still kick us, but again, we watch for those behaviors. So again, we just want to thank you guys for all the donations that we are getting because you are supporting all this. We do have farrier visits that come out and stuff like that, and then in the meantime, we are doing a lot of our own care. That was, I think, I believe, another question that we got earlier, is what care we do for these guys. Dobby, we worked on his hooves a little bit more this morning, and that was just Karen, another keeper, and I doing that. We are trained on basic hoof care, so that in between farrier visits, we can actually do some ourselves.
All right. Has Dobby noticed that his fans are gone?
You know, the zoo is really quiet, guys, and we miss having everybody here. Last week was, I think, a little bit of a shock for all of us. We're so used to having this place be busy and getting to care everybody and getting to talk to everybody. Dobby was a little wound up, yes, or last week. This week, he's definitely calmed down, but we, as keepers, have been going around, keeping our distance, and we also have masks if we're in around different animals, including primates. But we've been actually trying to make a point of going around and seeing everybody else's animals so that they're still used to seeing their people. We keep kind of joking that Dobby misses his fan club because that first day of having no guests here, he was definitely a little worked up and didn't quite understand why it was so quiet. As you see, though, he's still hanging out watching us. He's been following any time any staff member walks by, whether that's us keepers, whether it's Christina with her camera to get some more Facebook Live videos, or even when the maintenance guys drive by or walk by, he's definitely interested in them to see who his people are or where everybody's at.
All right. What are those bumps on their heads for?
So giraffes have a kind of different anatomy. So they are closely related to the okapi, which are their cousins, and they're the kind of shorter-looking, everyone thinks they're giraffe and zebra mix, but they're not, they're related to these guys. Their two, what look like horns, are called ossicones. So they are made out of bone, similar to an antler, but they do not shed them like a horn would, so they're actually called ossicones. So they are used for fighting. Males will do something called necking. It's kind of like playing Twister with your buddies, where you wrap your neck around and hit the other side, only for males. So there are two ossicones, and then they have another one in the back, so when they're hitting each other, they don't get hurt, and it protects their brain just a little bit more.
All right. How do giraffes sleep?
For the most part, they sleep standing up. So these guys all do lay down at night. They don't sleep for very often, usually 20 minutes at a time, not very long at night. Laying down is a very vulnerable position for them, so a lot of times, they're standing up, similar to a horse. If they do lay down, especially not here in a controlled setting where they know that there's no predators coming, they'll all lay down together, but otherwise, usually they have a guard watching so that if something comes up, like a lion, they can jump out of the way and be safe.
And four-year-old Ruby wants to know where they sleep. Do they have a nest? How to, like, what's their bedrooms look like?
So here at Denver Zoo, they sleep inside the barn. Dobby will actually like to lay out in our mold pile because it's very squishy, so we provide places for them to lay that's a little softer. The rest of our dirt out here is actually special granite in it, but then inside our building, the floor is actually padded and has shavings on it, so it's really squishy and really nice for them to lay on. Out in Africa, they're savanna animals, so you'll see them out in the nice, deep grass and laying down out there. But again, that's why you need to have them where they can kind of sleep, because that savanna grass can get really tall, so they always have that lookout out there so that they can see over those tall grasses.
Four-year-old Tate wants to know if they have any toys to play with.
They do. So outside, we have all sorts of different toys, and from this vantage point, you can actually see some. We have some in our planter in the middle, we have some hanging up, and we have spinners, silly little things even, like our sticks right here. You can see how there's chunks missing from it, and that's from all the giraffes chewing on it. So even something silly as a stick for giraffes is really enriching because they like to use that tongue for everything. If you guys can see, Dobby's actually trying to take my tools as we speak, he's trying to grab my little ID card right now. So even, we are enriching. We give them balls, he has a giant ball that he likes to kick around. We have a wind chime that they all seem to really actually enjoy, they like to rub their heads on, lick and play with, sometimes we'll rub smears on the walls, we've done chalk on the ground for them, all sorts of fun stuff.
Lenny wants to know why their tongues are so long.
Their tongues are so long so that they can bit around the acacia sticks. So the acacia trees in Africa have really, really sharp and long spines on them, and those tongues are able to reach up and gra- and those tongues are able to reach up and grab just the leaves and not get hit with those spines on the acacia trees.
Aww, four-year-old Giselle wants to know if they like to cuddle.
Oh, that's so cute. So they don't, they're not true cuddlers, but you will see them grooming each other and rubbing on each other. Um, one of our favorite little things that especially Capelé and Dobby like to do is she'll go, and it looks like she's checking on him, like a mom would go check on her baby. Um, she'll go over and lick him. She doesn't do it as much anymore, but cuddling not so much. Um, they will sleep near each other, but the way they have to get up and get down, it's really kind of awkward for them to be able to, um, quote-unquote cuddle.
Uh, Renata wants to know what are their specific heights?
So Dobby, last time we wait, or sorry, last time we measured him, he was 12 foot 3 inches. Um, Capelé, so Capelé and Heshi are a lot harder, because the tape measure was a little scary. So, um, we got a very close measurement, but Capelé is right around 14 and a half feet tall, and then Heshi is right around 15 and a half feet tall. Um, Dikembe was 16 and a half feet tall. Like I said, the Cheyenne mountain giraffes can get up to about 18 and a half, 19 feet, which as comparison, if you can see in the background, our tall red doors over there are 18 feet tall. So if we had a taller giraffe, they would have to duck to be able to get in.
Alright, wow, we have a question from Sweden.
Ooh, that's cool.
Why are the he, why are their eyes on the side of their heads?
So a lot of prey animals have eyes on the side of their head, because they need to be able to see all the way behind them. So if you get right directly in front of them, it's a lot harder for them to see them, and that even includes horses. So next time you guys get to come out and we are open, we actually have these really cool things, we call them rhinoculors. And all it is, is a PVC, um, pipe that's at a 90-degree angle with mirrors in it, and when you look in it, you're actually looking up to the sides. And it's to be able to give you the vision of what a giraffe looks like. So even if they're looking forwards, they're not usually looking at you. Um, you can also follow their ears, so you can kind of see where they're looking just by watching where their ears are going. So Capelé, although she's looking straight ahead, she's also listening to us to see if we're doing anything, or if I'm gonna call her over if we magically get some food.
Sophia, age seven, wants to know what Dobby's favorite treats are.
Oh, Dobby, he loves everything. So we feed him romaine, apples, carrots, um, these primate biscuits that are banana biscuits, but they're made for any of the leaf-eating animals. But his all-time favorite, and it was because his mother liked them, is parrot food. Um, so he can't have too much of it. We do have a nutritionist who tells us what they can have and what they can't have. Um, when Capelé was sick with, um, an illness, because she's an older giraffe, and she was pregnant with Dobby, we had been feeding her that to get her medication. Once Dobby was born, we were still feeding it to her, and he would steal some of it. And ever since, and he still loves it. So whenever we really need to get him to do something, so blood draw behavior, which is really hard for them, and might be a little scary, we bring out that parrot food, and usually that gets him excited to be able to do it.
Crystal wants to know if they're soft.
Oh, they're so soft. They're also oily, so you can't see it as much on my hands, but since I was just rubbing on Dobby's head, you get very oily. So it's a very black oil, um, that comes out, and that is another protection for the sun and from, um, bugs and stuff like that. So when they get wet, it'll start to scrape, but they really also don't like getting wet. So again, we just want to thank you guys all for joining us today and all of this time, and, um, any of the donations you guys are giving us is great, and we do greatly appreciate it. You're helping us stay here and help and take care of all these animals, all these 3,000 animals here at Denver Zoo.
Yeah, we are a nonprofit, and even though we're closed, we are staying, we are still here, we are still taking care of these animals, we're still bringing you this amazing content. So we know it's hard, but anything you can spare, we really appreciate. Amanda Manti wants to know if you have a favorite.
Oh, no, you can't, you can't say that. So I do have different personalities that I love. So when I first started here, Capelé was one of my tops. Um, she's very friendly. She actually like butt scratches in the mornings, so she'll line up at the bars and allow for butt scratches, and she'll actually solicit for them. But when you have Dobby show up, and all the care we put him through, and all the stuff we've done with him, it's really hard. Um, he's so lovable, but his mother was lovable. Um, you know, Dikembe, his late father, was my first giraffe I ever trained, and he taught me so much that, you know, I can't miss up on him. And then Heshi is just our silent little sweetheart, who, she is coming out of her shell a lot lately. Um, so with all of their personalities, it's hard to say if I actually have a favorite.
Yeah, we've got a lot of questions about how Dobby got his name.
Because we're Harry Potter fans, of course. So when Capelé was hiding her pregnancy from us, um, we didn't know because she was on birth control. So after the 14 months of her being pregnant, she had gained 100 pounds, and I don't, if you guys remember, I just said she was also sick. She had lost about 200 pounds during that illness. Um, with everything we had tried, we actually even did a full procedure on her to see what was wrong with her. We found out she was calcium deficient. So we started her on calcium treatment, which she's still on and doing amazing. Um, but in that time, because she had lost the weight, she started gaining, and we got really excited. We were like, yes, she's finally gaining weight, everything we're putting forth is finally working. Well, we had started seeing some other physical signs, but again, because she was sick, we were really worried it was her sickness, not anything else, because she was on birth control. Um, so another keeper asked some other questions. I did some research, found out that they had bred, because I remember that, but the birth control was covering it. Then I walked out to get something out of the yard, and lo and behold, Capelé walked in front of me, showing me that she had a full udder, just like you would see on a milk cow. And they were fully, fully developed, meaning she was gonna give birth soon. So, um, we prepped that moment and got her ready. She had gained 100 pounds, but we knew he was gonna be really little, because that wasn't quite as much pounds as a normal giraffe pregnancy would be, and with how sick she was, we were really concerned about that baby. So as our little superstition in our team is we don't name babies for 24 hours after birth, just to kind of give them a little more hope and so that we don't get, um, ahead of ourselves, pretty much. So we had to name Dobby in there, because, you know, we needed a tough name. If this baby survived, we needed a tough name, and we figured Dobby was the perfect one for that. And when he came out with those big ears, it was perfect.
Alright, we have so many questions. Alright, how fast can giraffes run?
About 25 to 30 miles per hour.
And do the giraffes ever not want to do their medical care, or what's expected of them? And, and what happens if they don't, if they don't want to do it?
Yeah, so, um, these guys are all pretty healthy right now, even Capelé's doing great. Um, so we have been practicing a lot with them. So Dobby gets practiced with his hoof care, whether we actually do something or not, we just pretend we're doing it just to keep him happy. And again, he's getting so much reinforcement for doing that, he loves to participate in training. Heshi, we're getting her started, but right now she doesn't need any medical care, but just in case we need to, we get her prepped. Capelé, we're having to work a little differently around. We've found a lot of things that, since she's an older giraffe, we have figured out that she's a little bit more claustrophobic, so she doesn't like a little bit of the other stuff that the others do. So we're working around that, and that's fine. We're going a little slower with her. If one day she says she doesn't want to train, which actually today, she was standing outside and to say she didn't want to train, that's fine, we'll train tomorrow. Um, if they are ever sick enough, like Capelé was, and do not want to participate, we have other ways of doing it. Our device back there that we were actually able to pay for with donations from you guys, um, is the Snug. It's the safe nurturing upright gateway for giraffes. So that is where our scale is, and that device is actually made so that we can squeeze a giraffe down, which again, they are trained for, so that it is not a scary device, um, and they can get used to it. So again, Capelé does not like it being in there, so should we put that fire hose across, so that it's not closed in there? And we'll work her in there. Um, Dikembe was actually able to get some treatments in there as well. So that device, even though we don't need to use it all the time, we do work them so that they're comfortable in there. And if they're not wanting to train, because they really just don't feel good, but we need to get some blood from them, we're able to use that device without having to sedate them or do anything more, um, invasive.
Alright, what are some common health concerns, um, that you, that you look for?
Um, so their feet can be one of the bigger ones. So because giraffes weigh anywhere from Dobby being 1,400 pounds to Heshi being almost 2,300 pounds, their joints can start to, um, kind of take effect in their feet. So that's why we take care for their feet the most, uh, because we want to make sure they have even wear and tear. So that's why we brought in the special dirt, so that as they're walking, it does its job for them. Um, but overall, they're actually pretty healthy. And one of my things I kind of like to say is, they're really easy to take care of until they're not. So prey animals like to hide everything from us and don't tell us anything, until it's pretty much time to make some big decisions. So that's why we try to preemptively do it. So Dobby has already had multiple blood draws, so that we can make sure his blood is still healthy. Um, and again, checking his feet, have the farrier comes out, um, the vets come out and check them, just to make sure we're not missing anything. Um, and that's, you know, why we say that we're here to, um, be their, their spokespeople, to let the vets know that if anything's wrong, and we get a good look at them every single day to make sure that everything's good.
Alright, eight-year-old Sophia wants to know how much they weigh.
So Dobby here weighs 1,400 pounds. He's about 1,466, I believe, was his last weight. Heshi was, uh, 2280, I believe, was her last weight. We just weighed him last week, and then Capelé is right under 1,600 pounds.
We just asked a question if Dobby is spoiled.
No, Dobby is definitely not spoiled. Um, he's, he's pretty spoiled. Um, he has definitely won over all of our hearts, and even none of his keepers. So we have a few keepers that actually just come and visit him. Um, we can't tell him no, because he's so cute. So, um, he gets away with a lot with us. We actually have to make sure some stuff's not on us, that if he decides to start playing with us, we have to remove some stuff, just so we don't want him getting hurt and stuff like that. But we love how curious he is. That actually helps us with our training, because he's willing to do stuff, even if it's scary, just because the reinforcement of us being around and of his food is really high.
Alright, what's your favorite part of being a zookeeper?
Um, getting to know the animals and getting to hang out with them. That's, that makes it all worth it. Like, we're here, um, you know, we go through everything with them. We're here with them eight hours every single day, 40 hours a week. Um, you get to know their personality, they get to know you. Um, people ask us all the time if they actually know who their keepers are. Um, so we all kind of jingle the same, so our keys kind of make the same jingle. Um, but you'll see them, they'll, they'll hear a keeper coming, they'll look out, see who it is, and see if it's their keeper or not. Um, they can identify us outside of our zoo clothes and without our keys. Um, they know our voices, so you guys might call Dobby over, and he might look at you, but if one of us calls Dobby, he definitely knows who his keepers are and that we usually have food with us.
Uh, we got a question, how they communicate within themselves?
Um, so a lot of it's body language, but they do have, um, a, a voice that you and I just cannot hear, but they can hear amongst themselves. So one of the best ones I ever saw was, um, at one point, Capelé was kind of far away, kind of actually where she is, and Dobby was in what we used to call his playpen. So he would hide underneath there. See, he's going to see his fans. Um, and a service dog walked up front. So as these guys are prey animals, service dogs can sometimes be a little intimidating to them, because they don't see carnivores that much. It's silly living in a zoo, but, you know, they're in an enclosed area that a carnivore is a carnivore. And since Dobby was sleeping over here and she was letting him rest, she got very big and very tall, and Dobby jumped up and ran over his, behind the, behind her and the rest of the herd. We heard nothing, but obviously she made some sort of announcement that there was danger in the area, and he got up and ran to her.
Besides giraffes, what's your favorite animal?
Uh, horses. So I work with the Shavalski horses. Um, we call them P-horses for short, because that name is kind of long, and it starts with a P, even though it's Shavalski. Um, and hopefully we'll get to go meet them here at some point during our closure, so you guys can introduce them, but, um, they've got a unique story. So I work with horses at home as well, and obviously I'm hoofstock girl through and through.
Uh, Sydney wants to know how you became a zookeeper.
Uh, kind of a weird story. Um, I was actually training with the Denver Fire Department before I got hired here, and was getting my degree in biology, and did not actually want to fulfill that career, so I switched. Um, and when I was little, I wanted to be a marine biologist, so it wasn't that far off. Um, and got an internship here, and after two years of being an intern and getting to work with hoofstock, with pachyderms, with sea lions, with carnivores, um, hoofstock definitely stuck with me. So I pursued it and was able to get a job here and have been here for 13 years now.
We're getting a question if Dobby has any brothers or sisters.
Oh my goodness, he has so many brothers and sisters. So none of them live here anymore. Um, Dikembe, Dobby's dad, actually had, um, 20 babies. So we've had a lot of calves move through here, and that's actually why Capelé was on birth control, because Dikembe had quite a few babies. So he has 19 brothers and sisters all over the United States.
They want to know what their favorite snack is in general.
Lettuce. Lettuce and their browse. So their browse they get every single night, and it's mostly an acacia leaf. We get it shipped in from, um, Cal, or sorry, from Florida, and that's actually part of what your donations are, um, helping us fund, is some of those other things where they don't need the browse every single day. Um, it's definitely good for them, because it's their natural food, but we do offer them alfalfa, which is their main diet. Um, part of those donations do go to being able to get that browse from Florida to here, while we don't have any leaves yet.
Alright, how long do they sleep a day?
Not very long. They sleep 20 minutes at a time, um, for anywhere between an hour to two hours.
Alright, we just got a lot of thank yous, lots of I-loves-you for, for Dobby.
Thanks, everybody. We, we do love you guys, we miss you. Um, hopefully this will all end soon. We're all taking our precautions. Um, you'll see, we have some visitors walking around right now. Um, hopefully, we'll be able to open again soon. We do want to thank you guys again for all the donations, all, every single one of them, since we are not-for-profit. Um, helps us keep running and keep our guys going.
By visitors, Amanda means staff. They've come to see Dobby. Alright, what, what are Dobby's favorite enrichment items?
Um, he definitely likes his mirror and the, um, wind chimes. He will play with his ball. We have a giant mega ball, which is, um, maybe three feet tall. Uh, he'll kick that around some, um, but he definitely likes to chew on the sticks too. You'll see him especially messing with the sticks here up on the feeding platform, um, quite a bit.
Uh, and to Susan, who's asking why there are visitors here, they're not visitors, they're, they're staff.
They're staff acting like visitors. We don't have any visitors here. Um, they are just staff members. We're trying to walk around and keep the animals engaged, and, um, they're definitely noticing a lack of guests. Um, so you'll just see random employees walking around, taking our breaks, and getting the animals some attention.
Alright.
Alright, guys, I think we are finishing up. We just want to thank you again, and again, all those, uh, donations that you guys are pushing in really does help us, and it means a lot to us. So thank you again from our three giraffes here at Denver Zoo and the 3,000 animals that call Denver Zoo home. Thank you, guys. Bye.
Embarrassment. Oh, shame. Me and my wife separated. So I, my rent out of money, I ended up out here on the streets. About, about, about a year, a year and a half, two years tops. But it was the worst experience of my life. I hated it.
Do you mind telling us how long, um, you had, had been experiencing homelessness before?
Roughly about, about 14 years.
I was on the streets a little over a year.
Um, I was at a, I was homeless for about four or five years.
Off and on for about five years. Cow chopping, staying with people, living, staying in and out of hotels, staying in shelter a couple times. Slept outside, did it all. I was out of place, because it wasn't me. I wasn't really used to it, because I didn't grow up homeless. You know what I mean? I had, always had a place to stay. When I became homeless, it was bad.
When, uh, you found out that you had been selected or were eligible for housing, how did that make you feel?
Whew. How did I feel? Happy. Very happy. I swiped the scammer card. On the screen popped up, "You have housing." Jump for joy. In bold letters. Yeah. Yeah, I felt relief.
For me, it was the golden ticket. I didn't know what it entailed, but it turned out to be the golden ticket. It's, it's like hitting the lottery for homeless people. It really, really is.
Well, I was actually incarcerated. And, uh, I went to court, and I had a lady come and interview me before I went to court, and told me that if I wanted housing, that they had housing, and she was gonna help me get out of jail, and then put me in housing. And as I wound up here.
They said, "Well, we got you some housing." "Yeah, maybe you have your house, we'll some housing, so if you're in the office, we can talk about it." So I get in the office, and I guess two weeks later, I was in a place.
And what did that mean to you?
Breathing room. Uh, room to, you know, assess myself. Relief.
And relief from, from what?
I'm not outside, sleeping outside. Slept in two hours, with the two that were safe. Walked all night and all day. Um, and just rode the bus in, in the winter storms and stuff. You know, yeah, we're about fighting and the cops, and, yeah, we're about that. This year is better than doing that.
I think what it meant for me was that I had, um, by putting a roof over my head, I didn't, it, it took out the wondering where I was gonna sleep out of the equation entirely. And that allowed me to start getting sober. Um, I'm not saying I haven't had my ups and downs in this building. Um, they're getting me grief counseling, I'm seeing a therapist, they're working with my meds, and everything is in the building. Um, it allows me to go to my AA It allows me to go to my AA meetings, it allows me to go to the Stout Street, it allows me, all these things, everything is right in my neighborhood. And so for me, I couldn't have asked for anything better than this. This is huge.
How's your apartment?
It's perfect.
I love it. It's fully furnished, dishes. It's a blessing.
It's beautiful. It's absolutely beautiful. I'm not worried about where am I going to sleep tonight. I'm able to buy sheets.
I can cook or if I want to, I could grill.
Yeah, like my island. I have an island in there that separates the kitchen from the living room. Yeah, I got it all decorated, but tonight I feel more secure now, you know, that I'm here. And I'm going to do everything to make sure I stay here.
What are some of the things that you're doing now that you're in housing that you couldn't do before?
Well, I haven't done too much, anything different, too busy getting some sleep. But eventually I can get some things done.
I've learned some stuff, I take better care of myself, I eat better, I keep myself clean, I keep my apartment clean. I care about what I say and do in front of people, you know what I mean? I respect people's boundaries and I've grown as a person. I'm on probation myself, but it's nothing bad. You know, I don't see myself going back to jail for any reason. So I'm doing pretty good. Back to normal, like everybody else.
I get more rest now and I get good food, hot showers and I'm more healthier now. I'm more rested. I can really read a book now, I can sit on my couch and read a book without being disturbed. Yeah, pretty much I got props now. I'm saving up some money now, fixing my apartment up. I got families coming to visit me now, you know, at first I couldn't do that.
What do you think makes it easier to live here?
There's always a therapist on site, always on call. And so I don't feel isolated. I can go in my apartment and if I, I deal with depression, severe depression. And I know that if I start to deteriorate, I know that I can come to the front desk and there's going to be somebody there to talk to me.
I always go straight to the counter and talk to a counselor, I know that, if you want to.
If I get in over my head, I know where to turn to. You tell them what you need to do, like my case manager takes me to all my programs and stuff. I'm involved in going to some classes, I'm taking a computer class, going to music and I plan on going back to school, to regular college once I get more familiar with computers and stuff, I'm going to go back to school.
And what else do you hope to do now that you're housed?
Oh, I didn't say I have personal. Steps on the ladder I still haven't finished, so go forward. Keep standing, keep an eye on it. Put forward and make something happen. I feel like everybody who tries is successful.
Hi, everyone, my name is Sam Guzman with the CLC. And I'm here with my colleague Diego. We will be interpreting today's meeting into Spanish. Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Samuel Guzman con la CLC, con mi colega Diego.
Occupying all three floors of galleries at MCA Denver, The Dirty South, Contemporary Art, Material Culture, and The Sonic Impulse will make visible the roots of Southern hip-hop culture and reveal how the aesthetic traditions of the African-American South have shaped visual art and musical expression over the last one hundred years. The experimental downpour lighting installation is open to all. The immersive lighting experience, which features almost four hundred programmable, color-changing spheres that playfully imitate a rainfall of colored light, will be on daily from thirty minutes before sunset until midnight on Sunday through Thursday and until 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturday. Rolling Stone gives it five stars, calling To Kill a Mockingbird an emotionally shattering landmark production of an American classic. Don't miss the broadcast adaptation of the classic novel. Discover the Rocky Mountain region's oldest, largest, and most predestined garden and home show, a nine-day spectacular event at the Colorado Convention Center where you can find inspiration from the latest ideas and trends in landscaping, gardening, and home improvement. Memory Mirror is an immersive installation that invites visitors to explore their relationship with memory through animation, dioramas, and interactive storytelling. As part of the installation, you are invited to contribute images or an audio recording that represents a personal memory. Stylish and vibrant, this world premiere play offers a lighthearted look at the struggles many Latinas go through to gain entry into cultural and artistic spaces that have historically excluded them. It examines Latinx representation in the media, the fears and uncertainties of adulthood, art as an industry, love and family. On the first Friday of every month, many Rhino locations open their doors with events ranging from art openings to live music. Standard hours are six to nine PM, but many locations are open during the day and later into the night. And that's a quick look at what's happening in Denver this week.
When it comes to live music, there's only one destination, the world-renowned Red Rocks Amphitheater. Red Rocks premieres as you're taking to Denver's most unique shows. And every concert provides a backstage pass to meet the band.
Music is really a reminder that we're all alive.
Powerful performances. Fantastic local bands. New shows added all the time. Don't miss Red Rocks Premieres.
When Denver weather delivers snow, everyone should help to keep walkways clear. For some, shoveling snow can be difficult, almost impossible. It's times like this that neighbor helping neighbor really makes a difference. Grab a shovel, volunteer, and become a snow angel. If you need help or want to volunteer, contact Snow Angels at denvergov.org. For more information, go to denvergov.org/snowangels. In Denver, the road most traveled is full of potholes. Fear not, worried traveler, Denver's Department of Transportation and Infrastructure is ready to fix the problem. To report a pothole, call 311 or go online at pocketgov.org. Click on the button, "Report a Problem," fill out the quick questionnaire, and within seventy-two hours, crews will be sent to fix the problem. Call 311 or go online at pocketgov.org. Denver is a vibrant and active place, and there are events happening every day in our community. And now it's easier than ever to find out what's going on in your neighborhood and across the city. Just check out the What's Near Me feature on denvergov.org. From our many recreation centers, vaccination clinics, festivals, venues, and even cats on mats, there's so much to explore. Just enter your address or scroll across the map to see what pops up. What's Near Me, yet another amazing feature on the all-new denvergov.org.
Denver's hot crosswalk signals are helping us cross streets more safely. Just press the button to activate the flashing yellow warning lights so drivers are alerted to slow down and stop, giving pedestrians a safe way to cross.
Clearing sidewalks after snowstorms helps ensure the safety and mobility of our entire community. This is important especially for senior citizens and people with disabilities. What's inconvenient to you could be dangerous or even life-threatening to them. Be sure to shovel your entire sidewalk. A wheelchair needs a minimum of thirty-six inches to pass. And if your property has a curb ramp, be sure to clear that entirely as well. Residents and businesses alike need to help make our community safe and accessible for all. In January on Elevating Denver, we take a look back at 2022.
And it's so exciting.
Celebrate the new year with a Mile High City retrospective of the people, places, and events of 2022.
It's pretty cool, everybody's engaged, everybody's excited, happy. So I think it could be better timing.
The Snow Angels program was born out of Denver days, which is an initiative that Mayor Hancock started about ten years ago. It's an idea that neighbors continue to help neighbors through the snowy months and something that the Snow Angel program does is it creates an opportunity for neighbors to assist neighbors who are unable to shovel their front walks, whether it be because they're living with a disability or they just don't have the funds to be able to pay for private services or elderly adults. We have six hundred homes currently who need assistance shoveling their walks. We only have about two hundred and seventy-eight volunteers across the city. So there are seventy-eight neighborhoods in Denver officially. Twenty-two percent of those neighborhoods do not have a volunteer in them. So it's roughly seventeen neighborhoods that don't have anyone who has signed up to serve those needs.
So the sign up for the Snow Angels program was pretty easy. I'm pretty sure I just entered my address and my neighborhood area. And then when it snows, I get an email that has a list of addresses without people's individuals' names of places that need to be cleared from snow. And then that gets sent to kind of all of the volunteers in that particular area. And then you just go and see what's been done or what hasn't been done. And because they're clustered into neighborhoods, they're all pretty close.
So the volunteers that we're looking for is anyone who wants to assist their neighborhood. They can go onto our website, which is denvergov.org/snowangels. They would sign up to be a volunteer and during a snowstorm, they would receive an email and they would say, "In your neighborhood of Belcaro, we need some assistance with your neighbors. Here's an address of someone you can go help." And so really it is anyone who's looking to assist their neighbors. We have snow shovels that we give to all of our volunteers. So if someone signs up to be a snow angel, they receive one of our shovels so that they don't have to go out and buy one if they don't already have one.
It feels important to me for neighbors to help neighbors because there are a lot of needs in our community and sometimes it can be hard to know how to contribute. And I know there are lots of ways to get involved. If someone likes the snow, if someone likes physical activity, if someone just wants to have like an easy, doesn't take that long, like sometimes even fifteen minutes, way to contribute. I think Snow Angels is a great program for that. I think for folks who might be hesitant to sign up, I know that there can be a lot of shame or stigma around needing help. And there's this value around being independent. But really, people like me want to be able to help and want to be able to allow folks who need a little bit of assistance to still be a valued part of our community.
I had a woman call me a couple days ago, she's eighty years old. Her husband is a veteran who is almost ninety, and they can't risk the fall, especially when it gets very cold outside, the snow tends to freeze, and then there's an option for slipping and falling. And they just are unable to put their own health at risk in order to do that. So somebody who is elderly would require some assistance. Same thing with someone who might be living with a disability, somebody who has a walker or a cane or something along those lines. It's very dangerous to be out on front steps and on front walks when it's snowy and cold.
I definitely feel a neighborhood pride in making sure that the area is accessible. The winter can feel really miserable to people sometimes. The days get shorter, it gets darker, it gets cold, people stay inside. And it's helpful just to have a little bit of neighborly care. And whether people notice or not, I think putting that out into the neighborhood is helpful for creating the kind of place that I want to live in.
I would say that volunteering is a matter of the heart. I think that if you feel the need to help out but you don't know where to start, a great start would be in your own neighborhood. You don't have to make your way across the city in a foot of snow to be helpful, to be of assistance. You know, it takes just a short amount of your time and it makes you feel good.
I secretly, although now not so secretly, love shoveling. And the reason that I love it is because it's a pretty active thing to do outside. And so in the morning, rather than just like cuddling inside where it's nice and cozy, I'll put on all my layers and go outside and like make it a workout. And so I'll try to like hinge at the hips and use good posture and make it kind of a game and make it feel active. And normally it's either snowing, which feels like a winter wonderland, or it's already sunny and beautiful and then it feels like a fun outdoor activity.
Good evening, everyone. Council will now reconvene after our evening session. There is no unfinished business. There is one proclamation being read this evening. I will read Proclamation 23-94. Proclamation celebrating the life of Dr. Martha Urioste, Chicana education trailblazer. Whereas Dr. Martha Urioste was born on October 2nd, 1937, in Raton, New Mexico. And whereas Dr. Urioste graduated from Loretto Heights College in 1958, earned her PhD from the University of Colorado in 1977, and an honorary PhD from Regis University in 2017. And whereas she was inducted into the Colorado Hall of Fame in 2000, the Colorado Latino Hall of Fame in 2018, and the Colorado Women's Hall of Fame in 2020. And whereas she was the first-gen graduate, a Chicana advocate and leader, a global Montessori and early childhood education advocate, expert, author, and change maker. And whereas she was a board member of Family Star Montessori Early Learning and was instrumental in establishing the first Montessori public school in the city of Denver, making Dennison Montessori Elementary School a national model, feeding into Sandoval Elementary School. And whereas she is known in her community as La Madrina de Montessori, or simply Martita, and was instrumental in elevating graduation rates among Chicano-Chicana students and other students of color. Dr. Urioste was relentless, was a relentless advocate for multilingual education, students and their families. And whereas Dr. Urioste served as a member of the Congress of Hispanic Educators who oversaw compliance with the Consent Decree for monolingual students in Denver public schools. As a champion for multilingual education, she insisted that leadership in Denver public schools be held accountable to fully implement the Consent Decree to provide multilingual learners equal opportunities to succeed linguistically and academically. And whereas Dr. Urioste was a trailblazer who created multiple pathways for students to achieve linguistic and academic success. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Council of the City and County of Denver that the Council of the City and County of Denver hereby recognizes the service to the citizens of Denver and honors Dr. Martha Urioste for her leadership, dedication, and phenomenal contributions to our community. And that the clerk and recorder of the City and County of Denver shall affix the seal of the City and County of Denver to this proclamation and that it be transmitted to her brother, Richard Urioste. I move that Proclamation 23-94 be adopted. It has been moved and seconded and will take comments by members of council, but I'll take a minute. First, I want to thank Martha's family. Martha passed in the last month and it left a ripple effect, I think, for so many of our community who felt deeply affected by both her work, her friendship, and just... And just want to say thank you for the gift that Martha gave to the city, to your family, and the legacy that she leaves, that of adults and children across the city. So thank you, thank you so much. Councilwoman Ortega.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for filing this proclamation. Martha was a dear friend of mine. She and I actually grew up in the same hometown. And I know her brother, Richard, went to school with some of my sisters. And Martha was just an amazing individual in terms of her advocacy for kids. And the work she did with Montessori education in the city will never be matched by anyone else because she truly was a champion both for building out the Family Star, which is the early childhood education program that is the feeder into Dennison. The first Montessori school we had was actually at Mitchell Elementary School in northeast Denver, and then it moved over to Dennison. Councilwoman Caniche's son and my grandson actually went to school together at Dennison. All of my grandkids went through Family Star and through Dennison. And the education they got was amazing. And that's because of the hard work that Dr. Urioste put into offering a model that she knew was going to be successful for our kids. And there are so many young people who have gone through there, that have now graduated and are doing amazing work across, not just this city, but many of them are in college and just working across the US, doing incredible work. So I was involved with the work when we were looking at what kind of model for what is now known as Anna Marie Sandoval School, which is just a block and a half away from my house. And the community was very adamant about what curriculum model they wanted. And at that time, the school board member wanted something else. And the community worked together to say, "We want a dual-language Montessori school." And the school board member who was supporting the different model was up for reelection. And the community got behind Lucia Guzman to elect her as the school board member because she supported that model. And that school has been incredibly successful. As a matter of fact, about a week ago, I ran into a young lady in the elevator here in our school, in our office building. And she worked upstairs in the Public Defender's Office. And she was a young student who had gone through Sandoval Elementary. And she's completely bilingual, young Anglo gal who lives in the Sunnyside neighborhood. But that school, very much like Dennison, created lifelong friends among the young people who went through these schools. And the fact that her legacy and her footprint on this city in fighting for bilingual education, especially for native Spanish language learners, to be able to start learning their curriculum in their native language as they were transitioning to learn English, is part of what that consent decree is all about, that she was one of those pivotal members that continued to monitor compliance with the consent decree. So I just want to thank Martha for her many, many years of contributions to our kids across the Denver community. And thank her family for having loaned her to all of us for all these years and shared her with us, because her work will live on forever, especially in all of our kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sandoval.
Thank you. Just want to acknowledge Martha. I joined the Latino Education Coalition with her not long ago, about a year ago. And she, on a Zoom call, educated probably, I think, 35 of us about this consent decree. And I remember getting off the phone call, and my daughter, who's 20, asked me, "What was that about?" And I, she was able to listen to Martha and learn. And I was just, it was so insightful. She, I kept asking questions, and she knew my father, Paul Sandoval, who helped create Bilingual Bicultural Act in 1975 in Colorado. She just, there was no stupid question that hour and a half that she was able to teach us all about the work and how important it was. And I remember seeing her not long after that, and she said, "Thank you for keep asking, and thank you for asking questions. Keep asking questions. It's because I needed these answers that is how I know so much." So my daughter and my son went to Sandoval Elementary School and experienced dual-language Montessori. I talked to her about my son and how he ended up leaving, and it's not for everybody. And she agreed with that, but she said, "Education is." And so it just, I was always awe-inspired. I was like the president of her fam club. Every time she got on the ALAC, she would ask these questions, and I would run into her after, and I was like, "I had that same question." And she was like, "Well, we need the next generation of leaders to speak up, Amanda. So in those meetings, ask those hard questions. There's no stupid question when it comes to advocating for our younger students and bilingual education." So thank you for sharing your sister with us. She was someone who I inspired, inspired me. And during COVID, when we were meeting virtually, she would talk and she would get everyone's attention on a 75-person Zoom call, which is very hard to do. It's like 75 Latinos vying for the microphone. And Martha would rein us all in and say, "Come on, this is where not advocating, we're not staying on the agenda." And she would make us get back in order, start us off with the agenda again, and then talk about the consent decree. So thank you. I had an amazing time this last year and a half getting to know her, the work at the ALAC. And she, we just had a forum this past Saturday for the Latino Education Coalition, and she was greatly missed. She was that person who would bring us all together and keep us on time and keep us there. So just know that as much as you miss her, we miss working with her as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call. Seeta Baka. Herndon. Hines.
Aye.
Black.
Aye.
Seeta Baka.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Caniche.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Sandoval.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Madam President. Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. 12 ayes. 12 ayes. Proclamation 23-94 has been adopted. We have some time for proclamation acceptance, and I would love to invite up Richard and Martha's family for any comments you'd like to make. Right up to the podium here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments that you'd like to make?
The only thing I want to say is I want to thank the city and county of Denver for this prestigious honor. Martha was definitely a trailblazer. She was definitely a woman with vision, a woman with passion, and an all-around good friend. And I think back to when former Mayor Pena had a slogan that said, "Imagine a great city." Well, if Martha was going to have a slogan, it would be probably, "Imagine a great school system." And Martha was not one that liked tradition. She liked to push the envelope. She liked to get people, as she would say, "I like to get people mad. That way, they can do something." And she went on in her life just to prove that if you strive for something that is not attainable to so many people, it can still happen. And that's what she did by bringing Montessori into the school system. And it would just be wonderful if we could eventually say that Denver is now the Denver Public Schools Montessori District. Whether or not that'll happen, I doubt it. But she always used to say, "Push the envelope, and it'll happen." Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate you being here. We have two public hearings tonight. For those participating in person when called upon, please come to the podium. On the monitor on the wall, you'll see your time counting down. For those participating virtually, when called upon, please wait until our meeting host promotes you to speaker. When you are promoted, please accept the promotion. Turn on your camera if you have one in your microphone. All speakers should begin your remarks by telling council your name and city of residence, and if you feel comfortable doing so, your home address. If you've signed up to answer questions only, state your name and note you're available for questions of council. Speakers will have three minutes. There is no yielding of time. If translation is needed, you'll be given an additional three minutes for your comments to be interpreted. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing and direct your comments to council as a whole. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech and refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilwoman Flynn, will you please put Council Bill 22-1602 on the floor for final passage?
Yes, Madam President. I move that Council Bill 22-1602 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you, and that's been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 22-1602 is open. May we have the staff report?
Yeah, good evening, council and all those watching at home. My name is Tony Lechuga with Community Planning and Development, and I'll be presenting the proposed map amendment located at 365 South Ogden Street. So this is a private property owner-driven application to change the zoning classification of their property from USUB to USUB-1. And we'll get into a little more clarity of what that looks like. To frame us for context where we are in the city, this is located in Council District 7, represented by Council Member Clark. You can see kind of on the far edge of that district. And you'll notice here that it's in the Washington Park West neighborhood. So as far as the request goes, the applicant is requesting to rezone their property from urban single-unit B to urban single-unit B1, which would allow for them to build an accessory dwelling unit on their property. You can see their property is about 6,300 square feet, which is a normal-sized property for a Denver single-unit residence. And the only thing this change would allow is the construction of a one-and-a-half-story, 24-foot accessory dwelling unit on their property. As stated previously, this property is USUB as is much of the surrounding area. As you can see in the map here, the property is the red box. To the east is an area of UTUC, which is a two-unit district. To the northwest, you can see an area that's USUB-1. So that would reflect what this property would look like, where the zoning is exactly the same as USUB, but people there can build an accessory dwelling unit. You'll also notice to the southeast, the corner of Washington Park right there. In terms of existing land uses, you can see the property is a single-unit home in an area that's largely dominated by other single-unit properties, but there's a scattering of two-unit and multi-unit residential properties. To the northeast, at the intersection of Alameda and Downing, there's a sort of local commercial corridor. To the east, you can see a public institution, that's Steel Elementary School. And then again, the park to the southeast. Here's a series of images that show the existing built form of the neighborhood, and they sort of show the diversity of building typologies. So the bottom-left corner is actually the subject property. That's the applicant's home property where they would like to build an ADU. You can see it's kind of a one-and-a-half-story structure with that classic Denver rise there. The property to the north is the picture above that, which is actually a single-story side-by-side duplex. The bottom-right corner picture is the property to the south, which you see is actually a two-story home, significantly taller, but still within the urban house building form. And then the picture on the top right is actually a two-story home that's across Ogden Street from them. So a diversity of building styles and forms and sizes in the area. In terms of process for this application, notice went out to the community on August 30th of this year. It went to planning board and passed unanimously on the consent agenda on November 16th. It then came to LUDY, where it also passed on the consent agenda on December 6th. And here we are at our public hearing on January 30th. And to date, we've actually received no public comments on this from either RNOs or members of the public. All right, so getting into our review criteria for determining if this is appropriate. You all know that there are five review criteria that an application has to meet in order for this to be approved. The first of which is consistency with adopted plans. So this particular property has three plans. There's the Citywide Comp Plan 2040. There's Blueprint Denver, which is also a citywide plan. And then there's actually the West Washington Park Neighborhood Plan of 1991. So pretty old, but we still happen to look at it. So the staff report goes into further detail on Comp Plan 2040, but things like ADU applications do meet a number of goals around equity and climate, considering that we're creating a greater mix of housing units in areas where we already have established neighborhoods. And then we're also sort of promoting infill development where we already have infrastructure and services. So that's a good place to put new housing. So turning our attention to Blueprint Denver. So the future neighborhood context that Blueprint identifies is urban, which is what the neighborhood currently is. So rezoning just to this B1 doesn't change anything about that, and so it does meet the review criteria for that. The future place type is listed as low residential. Low residential are predominantly single and two-unit uses, which is what this would remain. And it does specifically say that accessory dwelling units are appropriate within a low context in an urban neighborhood. The street type of Ogden is a local street, which is characterized by residential uses, which is what an ADU would help provide. In terms of growth area strategy, this is listed as all other areas of the city, where we see about 10% of job growth and 20% of housing by 2040. So this slight increase in density through an ADU would actually help us meet that goal. And then Blueprint also has specific policy recommendations. And I've highlighted land use and built environment policy for Strategy E, which states that individual rezonings to allow ADUs are appropriate and should be small in area. Because we don't have a neighborhood plan that says for ADUs in this whole area, looking at a single property is actually like a minimal increase, and seems planned supported through Blueprint Denver. We'll get a little more refined with the neighborhood plan here, but as I said, it came out in 1991, so it sort of predates the concept of an ADU. So in looking at this plan, we don't have any specific language about the appropriateness of ADUs. But we do see in Land Use Recommendation 4 that it calls for citing moderate residential density increases. And a detached ADU building form takes into consideration the types of recommendations about compatible setbacks, significant buffering, and would be cited on a place that has appropriate landscaping. So we actually think an ADU matches this particular land use recommendation despite the age of the plan. Staff also finds that the requested zoning meets the next two criteria. The proposed rezoning would result in uniformity of district regulations when they go through site development, and it would further public health, safety, and welfare because it implements our guidance from Blueprint Denver to allow ADUs in these types of areas. And it would provide a new housing unit that is largely single, in a largely single-unit residential area, which we see as a benefit to the public welfare. In terms of justifying circumstances, we find that this map amendment is appropriate with the adopted Blueprint guidance to allow ADUs in single-unit areas throughout residential neighborhoods. And then finally, the proposed zoning is consistent with the urban neighborhood context, the residential districts, and the USUB-1 zone district. And so given that, the finding that all the review criteria have been met, CPD recommends city council approve this map amendment. And I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have.
Thank you so much, Tony. We have two individuals signed up to speak this evening. I'm going to call the first speaker, who's participating in person, and then the next speaker who is virtual. If you can make your way up to the- If you can make your way up to the front bench after I call your name.
Good evening.
Good evening. You have three minutes.
Oh, my name is Kai Davids. I live at the property at 365 South Ogden. And yeah, I am applying for the rezon to be able to build an ADU. Just a little background, I guess. Started as a new garage project. My current garage is not really safe or large enough for modern cars. So I started working with a contractor to build a new garage. I came across the rezon process. I figured this would be a perfect time to build an ADU at the same time. So that's how I got to this place, and I've just been following the path since.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. We'll go to Zoom where our next speaker is Jesse Paris.
Yes, good evening, members of council. May I be heard? Yes, my name is Jesse LaChuga. I represent for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Commitment for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the East Denver Residence Council, Frontline Black News. And I will be the next mayor of Denver in 2023. And I reside at the Fusion Studios in Christopher Herndon's District of District 8. I'm in favor of this rezoning tonight. I thought it was going to be, you know, to increase our housing stock. Seems like this guy, he just wants to...
Audio? Did we lose him completely? Frozen? Jesse, if you want to unmute, you can continue with your comments.
I was done.
That concludes our speakers. Are there questions for members of council on Council Bill 22-1602? Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill 22-1602? Councilman Clark?
Thank you, Council President. I just think this meets the criteria and happy to support it today. Hope my colleagues will as well.
Excellent. Seeing no one else in queue. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill 22-1602. C. Tabaka?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Twelve ayes? Twelve ayes. Council Bill 22-1602 has passed. Thank you, everybody. Councilman Flynn, will you please put 22-1603 on the floor for final passage?
Yes, sir. Well done, Madam President. Thank you. I move that Council Bill 22-1603 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you, and that's been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 22-1603 is open. May we have the staff report?
Yeah, so it's me again. So I'll also be presenting the proposed map amendment at 1772 and 1788 South Akoma Street. These are contiguous parcels. This is another applicant, property owner request to change the zoning classification from IAU-02 to IMX-5. To provide a little context on where we are in the city, we are in Council District 7, represented by Councilmember Clark. And getting more refined, this is in the Overland neighborhood. You can see right on that border of the Overland neighborhood where Broadway creates a border between Overland and Flat Park. So in terms of the actual request, the applicant is requesting to rezon the property from IAU-02, which is a light industrial district with a billboard use overlay. There are no active billboards on the site, but it has that zoning classification retained over time. What they're asking for is to rezon to Industrial Mixed Use 5, which has a maximum of five stories, would allow a variety of light industrial, residential, and commercial uses in a diversity of different building forms that they could choose from. And they specifically are requesting this to facilitate denser housing for a mixed-use development across the two parcels. So as stated previously, the current zoning is IAU-02, as are the immediate blocks to the north, south, and slightly to the west there. To the east is South Broadway, which you can see is zoned UMS-5 on the west and UMS-3 on the east. And then as you progress even farther east, you end up in that USUB-1 district. So we see a sort of stepping down as you move away from Santa Fe, the railroad tracks, towards like a more single-unit residential neighborhood. To the west of the subject property, you can see a large block of CMX-8, which is the former Shattuck Superfund site, which we're going to talk about a little bit more later on in the presentation. And a block south of the property, you'll also notice that there are some CMX-5, CMX-8, and CMS-8 districts. And those actually represent a stepping up as you move towards the Evans Light Rail Station. The site is notably within the Washington Park View Plain, which limits heights at the subject property to 115 feet. Notably, this is actually higher than the proposed zone district would allow anyway. So the zoning is well within the height limit. So the site is occupied currently by two single-unit homes. And while there's quite a bit of light industrial in the area, there's also a mix of commercial, retail, office, single-unit residential, multi-unit residential properties. It's a really diverse area of South Broadway here. And some of these properties are actually light industrial in nature, meaning that they are, you know, the one directly across the street is actually a warehouse where they design and print signs that could go on the exterior of a building, something like that. The one to the west or to the east is an antique furniture warehouse, things like that. And again, about half a mile to the southwest is the Evans RTD Light Rail Station. So this slide shows the existing context of the surrounding area. So the two subject properties are located in the middle there. They're those like one-and-a-half-story Denver houses, again, on the classic little rise there. The picture on the bottom actually shows that property on Broadway that I told you about is actually an antique furniture repair and resale location. And then those properties to the north show sort of the new development coming up in the area. Those are the properties that are located on the Shattuck site. So you see sort of a four-to-five-story residential product there. In terms of notice, property owners were noticed that this application was presented to us back in August. It had a public hearing before the planning board on November 16th, where they voted to approve this. This came to LUDY on December 6th, where it was also advanced to here, where we are on January 30th. In terms of public comments, we've only received one public comment that was in support of this rezoning, noticing that it's a transitional area between residential and the Light Rail Station and the neighborhood across Broadway. So supported the idea of new mixed-use development here. So let's get into the criteria. So again, five review criteria that this needs to meet in order to be adopted. So in terms of consistency with adopted plans, we actually have four. We have the two citywide plans, and then we have the Shattuck District Plan of 2002, and then another older neighborhood plan, the Overland Neighborhood Plan of 1993. So we'll start big and then get smaller as we go. So the proposed rezoning meets many goals of Comp Plan 2040, including increasing housing units close to transit, creating a greater mix of housing units in every neighborhood, and encouraging mixed-use communities. So we see a number of strategies that are actually met by rezoning this property. Turning to Blueprint Denver, we can see the future neighborhood context is actually listed as district. I'll note that it's actually on the edge of multiple districts. If you look to the east, you see an urban. If you look south, you see urban center. And so this really is sort of a transitional area between different neighborhood contexts and future place types. Blueprint identifies the property as an innovation flex area. So these are designed to allow multi-unit residential that complements the light industrial uses. South Akoma Street is considered a local street, characterized predominantly by residential uses. And South Broadway is a main street arterial, which provides a diversity of commercial and retail options. So we see the proposed IMX Zone District as appropriately aligned with the various concepts at play here. The growth area in Blueprint Denver is districts. These are anticipated to see 5% of new housing and about 15% of new employment by 2040. The IMX district would allow for a diversity of commercial, retail, and residential that would help us meet these goals. And then I also wanted to note that Blueprint includes specific policy recommendations. And for this one, I wanted to highlight Land Use and Built Form Economic Policy 3, Strategy D, which states that housing should be allowed in innovation flex districts in the form of mixed-use districts. So this supports the idea that IMX-5 would be appropriate in this specific innovation flex area. All right, so getting a little smaller now. We'll come down to the Shattuck District Plan, which I said was passed in 2002, and it really focused on the redevelopment of the Shattuck Superfund site. So in 2017, a multi-unit residential complex was completed on the Shattuck site. The plan states that, quote, "15 or 20 years from now should see a redeveloped site," sorry, a redeveloped Shattuck site in a productive mixed-use neighborhood. We are more than 15 years out from that, and we do see that the Shattuck site has become this mixed-use neighborhood. And this would help realize that vision of expanding the mixed-use residential nature outside of the Shattuck site. Then turning to the Overland Neighborhood Plan, which was approved in 1993. So the plan expressed the need to provide appropriate transitions from industrial to residential properties. And the subject property is specifically shown as a transitional area from industrial to the east to commercial along Broadway. So we see the proposed IMX-5 Zone District as supporting this guidance by providing sort of a mixed-use transition from industrial to commercial and then residential properties on the other side of that. Staff also finds that the requested zoning meets the next two criteria, resulting in uniformity of district regulations and furthering public health, safety, and welfare by facilitating housing density near services along Broadway, as well as rapid transit station at Evans. Staff finds the justifying circumstance for this map amendment with changing conditions in the area, including the redevelopment of the Shattuck site, development of multiple multi-unit residential properties near the Evans Station, and city investments in the South Broadway streetscape. And then lastly, the proposed zoning is consistent with the neighborhood context, the mixed-use district, and the IMX-5 district intent statement. And so, given that finding that all the review criteria have been met, CPD recommends City Council approve this map amendment.
Thank you very much, Tony. We have two individuals signed up to speak this evening. We will start with our speaker who signed up in person, Justin Archuleta.
Good evening. My name is Justin Archuleta, and I live in Jefferson Park in Denver. I am here this evening on behalf of the applicant. I was hired at the beginning of the process to handle the rezoning application process for a friend of mine. And I reached out to Councilmember Clark and immediately started working with the registered neighborhood organizations. I attended three different meetings of the Overland Park Neighborhood Plan, got to work with their last year's president and this year's president, and really speak with them and address some of the concerns, talk about the project, talk about what the neighborhood was looking for, was concerned about. I think we had a really productive dialogue. Ultimately, the property owner came to agreement on a bunch of things with the neighborhood organization. So tonight, I'm here to answer any of your questions about plans or our process, and then just thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our second speaker is joining us on Zoom, Jesse Paris.
Yes, good evening, members of council, those watching at home, those in the council chambers. My name is Jesse LaChuga. I represent for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Commitment for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the East Denver Residence Council, Frontline Black News. And I will be the next mayor of Denver in 2023. And I reside in Christopher Herndon's District of District 8 at the Fusion Studios. I'm in favor of this rezoning. I just have a few questions. What is going to be the AMI level for this rezoning? Because as you know, or you should know, we have a housing crisis. And what we have is an affordability, attainable, accessible housing crisis. It is not affordable to live in Denver anymore. You guys keep passing rezonings that are not focused on that. So I would like to know what the AMI level is going to be for this rezoning. How many units are proposed to be on this parcel of land that's being rezoned? And when will the construction or begin on this? Or is it pending just this rezoning for you to get it started? If someone could please answer those questions. Also, if there was a traffic study done and a rail study, because this is right near the Light Rail. So if you could please answer those questions, I would greatly appreciate it. I'm pretty sure the people watching at home would too. Thank you.
Much. That concludes our speakers. Are there questions for members of council on Council Bill 22-1603?
Let me first ask Justin Archuleta, if you're representing the owner, if you have an idea of what he's planning to put there?
Yes. So there are no architectural plans as of now because it is just a private owner. He didn't want to go through the great expense of kind of getting the whole development project started. But what he is looking to do is a mixed-use building with residential. I believe he's actually investigating, utilizing the new Affordable Housing Initiative to look at some reduced parking reductions and increased unit counts. So I believe that is the potential. He comes from a working-class background and just really feels, I think, for like the missing middle in terms of housing here in Denver. So it's something that he's kind of passionate about.
So is the first floor expected to be commercial development in?
So we're hoping, based on the plans and the parking and entrances and fire access and everything else that kind of goes into it. But what the hope is, is that there is going to be something left over that for the neighborhood won't be, you know, just a mailroom, that there will be a large enough space to put an amenity for the neighborhood. And that's something that he has agreed with the neighborhood to put preferential treatment on as he looks for tenants.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. And seeing no one else in queue, the public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill 22-1603? Councilman Clark?
Thank you, Council President. I think this clearly meets the criteria. It's very in line with what the plans for this area currently have. Also, very exciting that one of the next neighborhood planning areas that's going to launch will include this area to update some of those plans that we heard that are from 1993. But we've been lucky that even with that outdated planning, we have the planning around the Light Rail, both Light Rail stations kind of sandwiching on both sides of this area that help inform as well. And I just wanted to say thank you for all your work on behalf of the applicant, meeting with the neighbors, going to neighborhood meetings, and really making sure that they were heard, that all their questions were answered. You know, not everyone goes to that level of really getting involved with the neighborhood association to make sure that they know who to call and everything. And I know that that's very appreciated by me and appreciated by the community. So this, I think, clearly meets all the criteria, and I'm happy to support tonight and hope my colleagues will as well.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else in queue. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill 22-1603. C. Tabaka?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?[1793.18]
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Council... Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Twelve ayes?
Twelve ayes. Council Bill twenty-two dash sixteen oh three has passed. Now, before my pre-adjournment announcement, I just want to acknowledge Marchesa Mays. This is your last Monday night with us, your last week with Council. And I know we're going to officially recognize you a little bit more fully next week, but just want to say thank you. You've been a steadfast staff support friend and just partner to me and to this whole body. So thank you so much. You will be missed, and the City Attorney's Office has gained a major asset in you. On Monday, February twenty-seventh, Council will hold a combined required public hearing on Council Bill twenty-three dash three zero, amending the Denver Zoning Code, establishing the Sunnyside Conservation Overlay Zone District and the Sunnyside Conservation and Brick Overlay Zone District, and clarifying standards in the Potter Highlands Conservation Overlay Zone District and the Bungalow Conservation Overlay Zone District. And Council Bill twenty-three dash thirty-one, changing the zoning classification for multiple properties to apply the Sunnyside Conservation Overlay and the Sunnyside Conservation and Brick Overlays within the Sunnyside neighborhood. Any protest against Council Bill twenty-three dash thirty-one must be filed with the council offices no later than noon on Tuesday, February twenty-first. There being no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.